Well, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of Bedford City Council of February 16th, 2021. If we could all rise and pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Lou Hardy?
Here.
Mezek?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Coche?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Janutus?
Here.
Thank you, council. You have the minutes of the work session of February 1st, 2021. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? By Janutus, second by Lou Hardy. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of February 1st, 2021. Any corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? By Mezek, second by Spinks. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the special work session of February 8th, 2020. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, motion for acceptance? By Spinks, second by Janutus. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
And no old business tonight, so we'll go right to reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items. I just want to first thank our service department for their work last night clearing the roadways. Obviously, we didn't get the totals that were initially expected, but they did do a great job of clearing the roadways and obviously clean up afterwards. Just a friendly reminder to the public that, you know, we did put out on social media, but in the event where snow exceeds two inches, we do have a parking ban on our street parking, you know, obviously for safety precautions first and foremost, but also it really helps our crews, you know, clean these streets and get them, get them clear as soon as possible. So please, friendly reminder, as we'll be getting additional snow on Thursday as well as into the weekend. Just, I also wanted to mention that we are going to be advertising for bids for our Ellenwood Waterline Project. Advertising for that will be near the end of the month. We hope to start this project shortly afterwards with the idea of being completed before the summer months and the hope of keep, still keeping our fingers crossed that we'll be opening the pool this summer. So we want to move forward with that construction as quickly as possible. It's an old water line that needs to get replaced and that would be from Kenyon to Broadway. So we will be bidding that project shortly. Also want to touch on, and it is in an ordinance or resolution later tonight that we are completing our tree canopy grant through Cuyahoga County. Our staff has done a great job identifying trees and streets and I will mention that a little bit later. I want to also mention that a couple of things, probably can't see it here, but please visit our website and, and follow us on social media, both Facebook and Twitter. Cuyahoga County Public Library in the Southeast Branch this week is going to be offering a food distribution in partnership with the Greater Cleveland Food Bank Mobile Pantry. Please go online, you'll see these flyers there. I'm sure they're on the public libraries website, but you can find them on, on our outlets. For those that are in need, registration does need to take place. But again, the Greater Cleveland Food Bank and partnering with the Cuyahoga County Library is offering the Mobile Pantry and it will be in our Southeast Branch this Wednesday, February 17th. And it's from 1 o'clock to 2 o'clock. And there's also some other dates in the future that it'll be offered. So again, please take a look at that. And I also want to mention, you know, our staff has done a great job identifying various programs that could be helpful to the public. All of those programs, we have really been working diligently to get out to you. Those are on our city website. They're on the social media platforms. Cuyahoga County and working with CHN Housing Capital, it's an organization. They're offering some home repair loan programs, some down payment assistance programs. All of those were recently advertised through Cuyahoga County. We've also had those Jennifer Kuzma, who is the Executive Director of First Suburbs and also working for us in economic development, recently had the individuals on a conference and they explained these programs. Very helpful, very useful, and they are up on our platform as well. So take a look at that. Staff has done a great job trying to get as much out to the public as possible. Lastly, I just want to once again compliment and, and say how thankful and proud all of us are of everybody that was involved in that, in the mural project downtown. Channel 5 did a great story on it a few weeks back in honoring Black History Month. Just again, definitely thankful and proud for all of those that were a part of that and to bring that to Bedford. Outstanding job and the story I thought was great. We shared that on social media. Anybody that hasn't had a chance to see it, visit our site and you can see that. Again, well done. End of report.
Thank you. Our Law Director, John Montello.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I know I'm Debbie Downer with this COVID stuff, but hey, I would, you know, if you're able to get this shot, I would urge you to do so and continue to use precautions and everybody stay safe and stay warm. End of report.
Thank you. And along with our Finance Director tonight, we're fortunate to have our Assistant Finance Director, Jennifer Holland, join us. So thank you for being here. And Finance Director, report.
I only have one comment this evening. We're currently creating a police lateral transfer listing. We currently have 18 applicants that are already qualified from other departments interested in being on the force of the city of effort. So we will be completing that March 5th. And at this point in time, we've, we've had pretty good, that's pretty good for our community to get that involved, that many people interested, and we look forward to more. But that's the end of my report this evening.
Thank you. Jennifer, you have anything to say? Okay. And with that, we'll get to Council, Mr. Lou Hardy.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a whole lot to report here. I just want to thank the Service Department doing a good job cleaning our streets this past couple nights. And we got some more coming. They're doing a great job. And just want to remind everybody to clear, try to make sure you clear your front sidewalks if possible. Hopefully, you're supposed to, but let's do them and try and also watch out for these people walking in the streets. It's that time of year, they do walk in the streets. The kids are back in school, they're moving around, so be aware of them and in the, with the snow and, and the report.
Thank you. Mrs. Mezek?
Thank you, Ma- I don't know. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to everybody. Winter's still here. We're almost at the end of our first year of this COVID-19 epidemic. I was reminded by one of our pharmacists at the Maple Heights Drug Mart, which is store number 38 for the local residents that have not gotten their shot yet. They're still accepting your reservation on their computer line, and I can give you that. It's www dot discount dash drugmart dot com slash COVID. You can go right on that website, sign yourself up, and you may be one of the lucky ones to get in right away. If not, they'll call you when there's more drugs available. They're averaging anywhere from 400 to 600 people a week for inoculation at the present time. I want to thank all my residents who have called over this cold winter. Everybody seems to be doing well up here. One question to Mr. Malice, if possible. Did we find out any information on the, the situation up at Happian in regards to going to obtaining a liquor license?
We have not heard back. We did submit the initial response and I was in discussion with Law Director Montello and we're still waiting to hear back from them.
I think, thank you, because you know, I have a few that give me a little personal call after the meetings to see where we're standing with that situation.
They were told that they're not allowed to have it. I'm not 100% sure if it's a dry area or not, but if it is, they're not going to get it, obviously without a vote of the people. So.
That, that's good news for us then, as long as they consider it's a dry area.
Well, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure it is dry.
Yeah, but still where they're at, we don't need any more extra, extra traffic to cause any problems, put it that way. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Fat Tuesday. Tomorrow's the first day of Lent, so you better party tonight. Although with the COVID, the way it is, festivities all over the country and all over the world, for that matter, have been limited considerably. So hopefully, everybody had a happy Valentine's Day on Sunday, although that's another one that has been severely limited this year too. So let's hope that we can get back to some semblance of order here, maybe by midsummer if enough people get vaccinated. And you definitely want to get vaccinated because I went through two weeks with the virus and I'll tell you, fortunately, I had mild symptoms, but it does wipe you out. So I've never been that tired in a, that I can ever remember, even though I didn't have anything other than the sniffles. But you definitely want to get that vaccination when you can. It will go a long way to helping us get out of this crisis of the pandemic that we do have. So let's get out there and if the senior can't get through a ride, you know, give one of us a call or something, we will get them to it. So if you know anybody, help them out. I'll reiterate Vic's comment on sidewalk shoveling. I've got seniors that go out for walks twice a day with rollers and they're stuck in the street because many people don't clean their sidewalks and they go out no matter what the weather is. So let's be kind and courteous as neighbors and help out those that can't maybe shovel it. But let's at least try to get some of these areas cleaned off. I know the snowplows, the corners tend to plow in the corners pretty good. But we can all help and we can make it a much easier for those that do need the sidewalks, especially school kids, because you don't want school kids walking in the street because a two-ton vehicle doesn't have much control in that type of situation, because we don't necessarily salt the streets other than the intersections, hills and curves and the main roads. So, which brings me to the topic that I bring up every year, and that is parking. So a lot of people, I don't know if they don't go on social media or what, park on the streets regardless of whether the snow bans there. Now, it seems to be the duplexes and it seems to be the homes that are running businesses out of their houses, like group homes, daycares and whatnot. They seem to be the ones that park on the street excessively. Of course, then that leaves no spots for neighbors, but you shouldn't be on the street this time of year anyway. Now, just because the plow goes up the street doesn't mean you can pull your car out onto the street because you're more than a foot away from the curb. And if you're more than a foot away from the curb, city ordinance says you can get a ticket. So let's be kind and courteous during this time period. We've only got a few weeks of this kind of weather. Let's get being normal and park in your driveway. The street's not there as an extension of your driveway. It's there for a temporary emergency overflow and not the permanent solution to you not wanting to move your cars around. So short of that, I wish everybody a happy Fat Tuesday again and let's get through this Lent season and get to Easter and hopefully this pandemic will start lessening even more than it currently is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks?
Good evening, everybody. I am a proud Louisiana girl. I'm glad I'm not there right now because their weather's actually worse than ours. I have my Monte Grabe zone, which is always a very special holiday for my mom. These were actually my mom's beads. They're just cheap beads, but I kept them because they were my mom's. And it was always fond memories growing up of the holiday, what we called holiday. Schools were closed on Monte Grabe Day and Fat Tuesday was always a big deal when I was growing up. They had to use their imagination and nuance this year in surrounding areas in Louisiana, because no cornavals, no parades and stuff. So a bunch of residents and crews did some really neat things this year because pretty much everybody in the New Orleans Parade Route has big houses with big porches. So instead of having the big parade floats, everybody decorated their front porches. So you could drive by some of the residents with throwing beads. Of course, they had snow today to the kids and stuff, so they were still able to keep that tradition and it kind of started a new tradition. So a shout out to my family back home. I hope they stay warm and safe. Kids in Texas, no electricity, so they're getting a little bit of taste of what we have up here, but I still love the weather up here in Ohio. I'll take it over those hurricanes any day. But just some fond memories of Monte Grabe and tomorrow, Ash Wednesday. So I'm, I'm kind of piggybacking on what Don said about the parking and stuff. I did, there were awesome police officers that put the, I have a little Facebook page, posted a cute little post yesterday on the Bedford Police Facebook page about being towed. They made a little cute little rhyme about it. So if you go on that page, you'll see they like always some cute little funny things on there. Yeah, just remember again with the trash cans, I did see a couple out last week. Of course, weather wasn't as bad with the snow piled up and of course, snowplows don't have much room to put the snow. So again, please don't, I know it's inconvenient to put it in your driveway, but please don't put them on the street. And like Don said, please don't park on the street too. Not everybody goes on Facebook, not everybody sees those Facebook. They should kind of be a common courtesy thing to know that our snowplow guys are out there working very diligently to keep our streets clean. Also, piggybacking on Paula, our Walgreens on Broadway, they have the vaccines. So I've seen, so we do have it here locally. Let's see. Also, a shout out to Magna Wine Boutique in downtown, our little business. They opened up their second business in Chogran Falls. So congratulations to them. That's a great little shop. It's a great place to go buy a little gift for someone. So kudos to them. I like seeing small businesses being able to do good enough that they can expand. And let's see. Mike, did have one thing for you. Always have to have some for you. No, it's nothing about the speeding cars, believe it or not. It's all about that. You did not cover about the COVID-19 testing place opening up on Broadway. So I'll let you talk about that real quick.
Yes. Sorry about that. So actually about a month ago, we were approached by someone, John and myself. John actually worked very closely with them. There were a number of items that we needed to get with the state of Ohio, initial items that needed to get approved. They finalized that. They submitted everything to John and Calvin. So what they're working to do is you'll be able to go and get tested. There's a cost for that. It is not funded through the state. It is a private business, but you will be able to go through and get tested at the old Mazda dealership on Broadway. So the business that is in there, I don't have the name offhand. I apologize for that, but it is, it is local. Obviously, it's obviously very helpful for anybody that needs to get that performed. It's safe. They meet all of the state guidelines certifications that were required. We actually, John received that towards the end of last month.
Yeah.
Working to do that. It's all drive-through. You don't even have to get out of your vehicle. And you know, they've communicated with us with all other questions or concerns that may have come up. So again, yeah, on Broadway at the old Mazda dealership.
Yeah. And thank you, John, for helping out with that, making that go, because I know it was, you know, it was a little confusing at first and stuff to get it going, but I did take a, that's, you know, like I said, on Broadway, that is my ward, the old Mazda place. So went down there. It's very convenient. It's very safe. They drive up, you know, they hand you the thing, you do it, you have, you do it right there. You swab your nose, then you go and you have a drop box to do it in. It's all very safe to do it. So it's, it's, I'm glad to have that in our city. So again, thanks.
I have to compliment you, Sandy. You did, you were very forthcoming in trying to get that in place. So thank you.
Well, that was the biggest thing. It's going down there, you know, a lot of times you'll get these calls from the people and they're wanting to make things happen and everything, but that's why it's always important. And thank you, Mike, too, and John for being able to have y'all to go to and we work on this together because it's for the, we're all here for the same thing, for the betterment of the city. We're always trying to explain. We, it's, you know, we have to look out for our residents and make sure everything is, is legit and done the right way. We would have liked to have it done overnight, just like that, but sometimes we can't do that. We've got to make sure that we, safety first, and that's what I was trying to explain to them. And thank y'all for doing a good job, John. I appreciate you doing that. So it's a good thing to have. One, one last thing. I'm so excited about the tree selection on the Urban Healthy Urban Tree Grant. Good trees. I'm excited about that. We are known as a tree city, so it's good to have the selection that we have. That's all, it's so good for our nature to clean our air. So it's very important. And so kudos to whoever made the selection of the trees that will be planted. And I did see there's a couple of them in my ward. So end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Geez, anybody happy? It's snowing in Texas, I suppose. We'd like to hear that kind of thing, but Don's right. We're halfway through February, so we'll have to bear, bear with it. And since Don and Sandy both mentioned Fat Tuesday and for all of those who, you know, are stopping their partying to watch the council meeting tonight, I'll just, I just won't have the report so that you could get back to, we could all get back to partying sooner. Thank you.
Very generous of you, Wally.
Totally.
Just a reminder for our hearing of citizens, if you have a question or comment, direct it online to citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. And I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday is the Chocolate Walk for the Downtown Alliance and go online to bedforddowntown.org and get all the information. It'll be done a little bit different this year, but I know the past two years have been just a lot of fun. And so check them out and it helps, helps stimulate our downtown businesses, which certainly need our help to, to get through this COVID crisis that we're going through. So with that, let's get on to new business. Ordinance number 9852-21. And ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Allied Door Systems LLC and declaring an emergency. I have a, excuse me, motion for suspension by Janutus, second by Lou Hardy. Clerk, call the roll.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Mezek. Mike?
You're muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is the final installation of the automatic doors for the main entrance of the municipal center. We completed the improvements to the entryway over by the building department. We completed the entry to of the entrance, the doors at the main entrance. We have two others. And this is what this reflects. It is the same cost as the others and it'll all be touch-free moving forward. So definitely a good upgrade for these in the future.
Thank you. Any questions, Don?
Yeah, Mike, is there limited hours that the touch-free will be working or is it, the main doors are what, 24 hours? Because some, anybody could come and just to warm up some bum off the street or whatever too. So I know we got cameras too, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, so the doorways, well, municipal centers, we are open, obviously, as you know, 24/7. The police department's here, so anybody can walk in. You know, we have to stay open, but these have the ability to be shut off for the automated portion. The doorways over at the building department, we shut off in the evenings. And the main entryways, we can shut that automated off on one set will most likely leave the other set on for individuals coming who may need assistance in the evenings or who need to visit the police station. But they do have the function to where we can shut that off, but they'll still be open by the handheld or we can leave them on if we'd like.
Thank you. Thank you. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number 2561-21. A resolution authorizing the city manager to apply and accept a grant through the Cuyahoga County pursuant to its Healthy Urban Tree Canopy Grant Program and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Spinks. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Lou Hardy, second by Janutus. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. This is the, this represents authorizing the city to apply for this year's Urban Tree Canopy Grant offered through Cuyahoga County. We were successful last year. The max that you can apply for, actually the max grant award is $50,000. We're preparing an application that's going to be slightly above that, around $55,000. There's certain There's certain targeted areas where we would need to plant these trees. Clint Beller and Sean Francis, they've done a great job, especially working with our arborist, Joe Vito, as well as Aaron Fatch at the Recreation Department and Jennifer Kuzma, who's putting this grant application together. This is not the award, you know, we are optimistic that we're going to submit a good application. And as referenced, and I hope I can be heard here, just to give an idea, we'll be applying for funding to plant trees on numerous streets such as High, Avery, Natalie, McKinley, Wondell, Paul, Henry, John, William, Charles, Logan, East Interstate. And it involves a number of different trees, such as lilacs, autumn buckeye, black gum, service berries, and some others. Again, staff have done a great job, we're keeping our fingers crossed. On top of these streets that we identified, Recreation and Parks Department last year worked to remove a number of dead trees in some of the local parks, also dead and diseased trees at the community center over on Allenwood. And these, this application will also include trees to be planted at those locations. The grants will provide funding for the purchase and installation of these trees. So we hope to have a successful application, and we'll, we'll update everybody when we hear.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, clerk, call a roll, please.
Fleuharty?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Koche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
And finally, we have a motion to appoint Jeff Sleizak to the Civil Service Commission. All hands. Motion by Spinks, second by Mezak. Frank, you want to talk about?
Yeah, I've known Jeff for many years. He served on our committees of housing, done a great job. He's done a great job for the city, he's a police dispatcher for many, many years. He even went on to our new program with dispatching for the southeast area, and he's done a wonderful job. Always cares about the city, always has it at heart. And I recommend him to the Civil Service Commission to serve with us in the unfortunate passing of Richard Novak with that vacancy to be filled. We miss Rich quite significantly. He's a wonderful person, had forty years on civil service and did a great job for our city. And I'm hoping, too, that by putting Jeff here, he'll continue that great service onward for our police and our firemen and our testing programs. So I ask council to vote favorably on this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Fleuharty?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Koche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to take a moment here for, to put a little plug in for our residents to apply for some of these board positions. We will have a few openings coming up real soon, and we are looking for some good people to fill that in. So if you're interested in serving on a board, please contact Tracy Simons, our clerk of counsel, at tsimmons@bedfordoh.gov, or a letter or a phone call. Let her know of your interest, and just write a quick little bio of why you would like to be on the board. We would appreciate that, because like I say, we're going to be selecting some people soon. And with that comes to the hearing of the citizens. Mike, do we have anybody?
Yeah, we have multiple.
All right.
I will read them, one sec, I'm refreshing. Okay, first message from Kathy Chech and regarding, from the Bedford Downtown Alliance. And I'll read it, it's an announcement for this weekend. "The show must go on. Despite these crazy times, the Bedford Downtown Alliance is continuing its tradition of chocolate fun this Saturday from ten AM to two PM. The thirty-annual Chocolate Walk will go on with a few changes. The purchase of a twenty-dollar ticket will get you a box of treats, three drink tickets at local establishments, and a coupon book for local businesses. In addition, wine pool and punch card tickets will be available. All events begin at the historic Bedford train station with an additional GameStop at Saul City Dance Studio. The after-party continues at Cernas with a two-thirty hat contest being judged by one, by the one and only Bedford Oompa Loompas. The trifecta bike drawing, courtesy of the Broadway Cyclee, will be held there as well for those who purchased a combination general admission, wine pool and punch card drawing. Tickets are available for purchase at Cernas Cafe or on the BDA website. Purchases can also be made on the day of the event. These tickets are available at www.betforddowntown.org/chocolate. Cernas Cafe, seven ninety-five Broadway Avenue. And the Bedford Tribune article at bedfordohio.org/annualchocolatewalk offers drive-through options this year. Great article. Thank you, the Bedford Downtown Chocolate Walk team. Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, thanks, Kathy.
Hey, Mayor, if I could add, the Buckeyes might, might be having a big game this weekend, so that might also, you know, urge a reason to go.
Okay.
I have another message from Jeff Asbury from seventy-one Eldred Avenue. And he states that, or he's, his message is, Jeff Sleizak is an excellent choice for the Civil Service Commission. I believe Richie Novak would approve. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks for that remark, yeah.
And the last message I have this evening from Helen Briggs, one forty-nine Graham Boulevard. This is in, this is regarding our traffic issues of speeding, running stop signs and car haulers. I've seen a significant increase in police presence, and just wanted to say thank you for the added time in addressing these problems. I've also seen the service department making the rounds, filling potholes and doing general maintenance that bad weather can bring. The extra presence by both departments has not gone unnoticed and is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
Thank you for that.
And I'll be sure to pass that on to, to both departments. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay. Lastly, I just wanted to mention one other thing. There was a slight delay, I believe it was like a minute delay in the streaming, but we will have the full meeting up later this evening. So for those that may be looking for that, the meeting will be up, it'll be up later this evening. And I appreciate all the cooperation in regards to that.
Okay, that's it?
Paula had something.
Paula?
I would like Mike to repeat the website for the Chocolate Walk again, but slower, so we can write it all down, so I can pass it on.
Sure, tickets are available at www.betforddowntown.org backslash chocolate.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep, and there was also, the Bedford Tribune did a really good article on the event, and that can be found at bedfordohio.org.
Okay. If that's all the comments, then I'll ask for a motion for adjournment by Spinks, second by Fleuharty. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Fleuharty?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Koche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Well, thank you all for being here tonight, and have a nice evening.
Stay warm.
Thank you.